You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 23rd, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everybody. If you have cell phones. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. If you have a cellphone, please turn them off. I'm working on doing that myself here. Call the meeting. We'll call the La Porte County Council regular meeting on January 23rd, 2023 to order, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Afterwards, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for a county employee, Michelle Beeler, who passed away on Friday. Would Adam Karanka please lead?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, liberty, and justice as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Order, would you please have the roll call?
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
And Councilman Karanka.
Present.
Everyone's present.
Thank you. Like to move on the agenda. Approval of the January 23rd, 23 agenda.
Motion approved, Mr. President. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any adjustments? Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry.
Like to make a motion that from this date forward, anytime there's an amendment, it have the date and the time that the amendment occurred.
Okay.
Sometimes we have two or three amendments floating around, so it seems to me that that would be appropriate. And while we're on the agenda where it says, "Please turn off all cell phones," I think we should ask them to put that in old print. Pretty critical if somebody doesn't see that early, the phone rings. Disturbs the meeting.
Acknowledged.
Thank you.
So now that we have a motion and a second, and we had conversation, any further conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, motion carried. Approval of November 28th, 22 meeting minutes. Everybody have an opportunity to review them.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carried. Approval of December 15th, special meeting minutes.
I would just indicate, if I might, Mr. President, there was one technical correction, the spelling of the word foreman on page seven is twice as F O R M A N. It should be F O R E M A N. We have made that correction.
Okay, noting that correction.
Motion is amended.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of January 9th, reorganization meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We now open to public comment. I will ask you to try and keep it brief as we're trying to keep these meetings moving. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak, please step forward to the microphone. And if you are on Zoom, please put up a hand.
Hi, Lisa Pierzakowski, Senator Township Trustee, 1108 West State Road 2. I've got a couple of different things. I gave the auditor and Vaughn the totals for the grant funding that you guys have given me for the evictions. We spent $37,126.58 in 2022. We've spent $2,206 already in 2023, leaving me with a balance of $13,047.3. So that's where we're at. I wanted to bring that up to you so that you have those totals. The next thing is, I see that the, on the agenda for tonight is for the volunteer fire departments, the $10,000 that each of the volunteer fire departments. I know when we had talked before, if there was something special, we could come up to you. I'm asking, I'm sure I won't get it, but I'm going to ask for $20,000 for Center Township. And what that is for is we need five new sets of gear, and they run about $4,000 each. And we're looking at six to nine months before we even can get some of that gear in. So instead of the $10,000, I'm asking for $20,000. So I know no decisions are made tonight or anything. Mr. Rosenbaum, President Rosenbaum already informed me. The next thing I wanted to talk about was annexation. As you know, 39 North has been on the annexation before, and it's hitting up again. And I'm just wondering where, and again, President Rosenbaum has told me I can mention all this. I won't receive any information back, but I'm kind of disappointed that I'm hearing some of the council members are all for the annexation because they feel that fiscally it doesn't affect the county. I'm going to disagree, number one. That is a large industrial area, which could have more industrial coming in. It also is a large area where we have new housing that's going to be built, possibly a senior center, senior living, possibly. We're not just talking 39 North. We're also talking about some of the subdivisions off there, and that's quite a bit of housing. You're looking at 100, you're looking at 300, you're looking at Tiffany, you're looking at Breyer, and all that stuff. So, you know, just to say fiscally that, you know, it doesn't do us any good to, you know, to fight that or worry about that. Let's just let the city have it and go there and let them have those tax dollars. I, you know, I live in the county. I live on Johnson Road. I fought annexation before. If it happens again, I'll fight it again. I bought my house in the county for a reason. I didn't want to live in the city. And we have a lot of people that, you know, again, bought their house in the county. They don't want to live in the city. And some of them don't have the finances to fight it. Some of them could care less. Some of them are buying into what's being said. And I would just hope that, you know, the county would be concerned about this because that is tax dollars. So, you know, when I'm hearing what's going on behind closed doors and, you know, this person talking to this person, this person talking to this person, that, you know, the county really just doesn't care. And that just really disappoints me. We're not even 30 days in after everybody's been elected. And, you know, the people that live in the county, it's like, well, I guess you're going into the city, so I guess you can vote for the next city person because we don't need you anymore in the county. So I'm disappointed. I would hope that you guys would, you know, rally behind and listen to what the constituents have to say and, you know, possibly help. So I'm concerned if it is annexed into the city, that how long is it going to take for it to be fixed? I know being at some of those meetings, President, or Councilman Nova, sorry, was there as president before. And, you know, when asked how long it would be, the answer was they really didn't know. It could be two years, it could be four years, it could be more. You know, I'm looking at the Herald Dispatch, and, you know, I see that we have weller ab that needs to be fixed. And rebuild a weller ab in the works, won't start anytime soon. You know, that's a lot of money. Tackling a 100-year-old problem, okay? Here we have lots of things going on. So are they going to fix what's in the city currently before they fix what they annex? Because it's not just Center Township. They've taken over some of 35 North, and that was, they wanted to be annexed. You know, some acypio's been annexed, Kalin's been up here, some of the other township has been annexed, Pleasant Township and stuff like that, you know. The more this annexed, the more they can build houses or build industrial and build all that, and that's more tax dollars for them. When are we going to keep what is ours and fight for what is ours and work for what is ours? Or are we just going to let them just pick us off little by little? So that's basically all I have to say, and I hope that you guys will stand behind the residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The only thing that I will add is that the county has its own layer of tax that even if the city comes in, takes over and annexes it, the only place that you lose it if they give tax abatements. So I just want to make sure we just clear that little piece up. Thank you, though, for all the comments. Anybody else from the public that'd like to make a comment this time? Anybody else on Zoom that'd like to make a comment, please raise a hand. Seeing none, hearing none, we'd like to move on to department head reports. Any department head that'd like to come forward with a report?
Good evening. Rob Sabi, Acting Director for EMA. I sent an email out to all of you earlier this evening, some things that we've got going on in our department. First, I'd like to talk about our mitigation grant that expired last May. We're in the process of going through that, trying to get that back on the fast track. That's actually one of our hot items we're working on right now. This is required every five years, and we got, somehow got behind the eight ball on this, and we're trying to catch up. We're working also on our emergency, our county emergency plan, and that hasn't been done for several years, so we're trying to get caught up on that also. We're coming up with a plan to work on our sirens. We have several sirens that are in disrepair that need worked on. We've got to come up with some kind of a plan on how we're going to fund those to get them fixed.
Mr. President?
Got a question.
So this has been asked for over a year. I think Barb was even involved in the last one. We were supposed to be applying for grants because we have all of them. So we understood it has to be done, but where do we stand in the grant process?
Well, there isn't, right now, there is no grants available for the sirens.
It wasn't a year ago, okay, because they had picked two of them, and they thought that we should be eligible for.
Well, if there was at that time, I don't know about them, but it was before me, and apparently they didn't, I don't know if they apply for them or not, but.
At the end of the year, Mr. Sabi asked for a workshop with the council to bring us up to date on the sirens, but we kind of ran out of time at the end of the year. So I don't know if that's still something that you'd like to pursue this year.
Yeah, I talked to Commissioner Gamorosa about, we had a meeting with her last week, and she wanted to come up with a plan on basically having somebody come out and looking at all the sirens to see where they're at. So we know what we need to fix. I know right now our sirens are American Signal, and American Signal contracts with Marcus Electric, so anytime we have any work done, that's who they hired it. So I know that they've talked to them about going out and kind of looking at them just to get an update to see where we're at. Because some of the sirens, the boxes are rusted out, their battery backups, the batteries are hanging out. A lot of the poles that were donated when they put them up are too short. They're supposed to be 55 feet, and some of them are like 25, 30 feet. They were just donated poles. So we're just kind of like behind the eight ball in that also. So we're trying to come up with a plan so we can, you know, it'd be nice if we could sit down and get a workshop and then, you know, go from there. So I know it's going to take some money, but.
I think it would be nice to revamp all the sirens and make sure that we have enough sirens everywhere in the county informissaries.
I disagree. This is not your fault. This was two years ago, Mike Mullenauer brought it up. You're supposed to have a study done to say, because the 25 foot does not, doesn't mean it should be 50 foot. You do a perimeter, how far the sirens reach out. That's what you do. If you need 50 foot, you need 75 foot. Whatever you need, that's what it is. So we asked for the study brought two years ago. Again, not your fault. We asked for the, because it's such a large project, to get the grant money. Again, not your fault. But if we keep repeating these things, that's the problem we have. It's not that we know all the problems, but the problem solution is that we need to get money for this big huge project. We can't afford a big project like that right now.
Okay.
So we asked to do a study right off the bat. So I can bring you the minutes of the meetings for that, because I know Mr. Mullenauer brought it up two years ago to talk about that process. So if I may, moving forward right now, in order to get a workshop, how much time do you need to be able to get the information that you need to get together to talk to us about?
I'd get ahold of Marcus and see where they're at. I know they've worked on a lot of sirens over the, you know, past few years. So I kept some records on it. I did meet with Andy and Commissioner Gamorosa, so that was our discussion then. But I know we talked.
So my question is, are we talking two weeks, three weeks, five weeks?
Well.
Don't answer now.
What I'm saying is.
Why don't you take a few days to get everything in order? Contact me, and we'll see what we can do to set up a workshop, okay?
Absolutely.
And that way we'll get this started and get it going in the right direction.
Okay.
And we appreciate.
Fair enough. That's actually what I'm looking for, is some kind of direction where we want to go. So also, we've been, as far as our department, we've been working, we work with all our partners in District One, which is Porter Lake, Newton, and Jasper County. We work with all the EMAs. We do a lot of training and, you know, for natural and man-made disasters, we've been working a lot on that. Actually, we did a training last, let's see, I think it was in December, right before the snowstorm hit. And it was on a snowstorm, what would happen if we had, you know, everything got shut down. So it kind of played right into what we were doing. We've been working on the rave system. I don't know if all of you've been signed up on that or not. So if you notice that right before the blizzard hit last December, the raves were starting to go out, and you got a lot of blizzard warnings. What we did is, I guess it was never turned on before, but we have an automatic system that as soon as the weather service sends out a warning or a watch, it automatically goes through rave and gets pushed out. So we have that hooked up right now. So that way it eliminates, the 911 dispatchers don't have to touch it. You know, there's not a big delay. As soon as that comes out, it goes right through. So we've got it set up. We're trying it. I mean, it's the first time we've done it. So if there's any problems, let us know so we can look into it. Also, you know, we still have this Smart 911. We have the link on our website, the county website, that if the public wants to sign up for that, it's the public side of the thing. They still get the weather alerts. And all of you can sign up, anybody can sign up on the Smart 911. There's an app you can download on your cellphone, and there's a whole bunch of information you can put in there that, you know, if you dial 911, that 911, the actual 911 center will get that information. Another thing that happened last week, and I don't know if you're all aware of this, but IDEM contacted us last Thursday about the trailer park up on 39 and 20. They haven't had, apparently they were without water for several days. They were asking if we could assist with that. So we went out and purchased 25 cases of water, bottled water, and we took bottled water up there and delivered it to all the residents so they had something, you know, fresh water to drink. I got a phone call today, this afternoon, from our liaison from the state. Apparently, they had a meeting. I guess it got all the way to the governor's office. Apparently, the county doesn't have a lot of authority over that, so the state's going to step in, and they're going to, I guess, kind of push to maybe have that place closed down because they can't keep clean water there. So I'm not sure how that's going to turn out, but that was the last we heard this afternoon. So you might be getting phone calls on that. And that's basically all I have today, but.
Just, may I?
Yes, please.
Just want to say on that, regarding that trailer park with the redevelopment commission, they have had a brief conversations in the past, and I think there's something that might be coming up about extending water and sewer out to them, a request. So.
Okay. Right now, they're concerned about the quality of the water. They didn't have any to begin with. And then the last time I guess this happened, the water was brown, and so they're not sure what the quality of water they're going to get, they're getting out there. And so we're not sure how that's going to turn out, but that's, I know the state's involved in it now, so.
I'd just like to make a comment that I know Rob's been giving me a call on his liaison and quite a few times here since he's taken over. And he and Fran are working really diligently to get this, a lot of these things taken care of. Loose ends tied up. And getting to the sirens, what Mr. Yagelski said is correct. And that's why I think we all talked, we need a workshop so we can find out rather than replace sirens. They may have to, it might be an area that's not being covered, and one of those replacements can be moved.
That's another thing that we might want to look into is, like you said, there's probably several areas that's grown, you know, new subdivision, whatever, that haven't been addressed for quite some time. I don't remember when the last siren that was put in, you know.
I think originally, I think in the 50s, these ones were talking.
Well, we've got a couple that, I know there's, the one out of Purdue is, that one was probably from the early 60s. There's one at Pleasant Township that's probably from the early 60s, late 50s, the old civil defense sirens, you know. And those aren't, you know, you can't upgrade them or do anything with them anymore. So they're way out of date.
Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I just want to add to tell the councils that we did receive a bit of a report today, which was repeated to us. I've now asked Mr. Sabi to do it a little earlier in the month, so this way we would have time to digest it, and that way we'd be able to talk about any issues that have come up. So again, we're just trying to get things on a little better, make it easier for us at the meeting, so we don't have a lot of last minute reading to do that day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others?
Good evening. Steve Ira, Adult Probation. I'm here just to ask for an account to be set up. We received a grant through the Indiana Office of Court Services, and it's, how it's funded this year, it's new to us, and we do not have an account set up for that money. So I called the auditor's office, talked to Vaughn, and he said, "Come here tonight and ask y'all to authorize an account to be set up for that grant."
Mr. Ira, do we need an ordinance for that account? Did the court services say anything along those lines?
No, it folded into our Department of Correction grant. So we get a DOC grant, and instead of applying separately, they said just apply within that. So we received, it's $5,000 for the year, out of the DOC grant, and they just need, the auditor, we need a separate account to have that housed.
And it, question, if I may, Mr. President, and it needs to be segregated, essentially? Yeah. And you've received the funds already, so we need something.
They do quarterly drops. We have a quarter of it sitting in the fund. So we got this from the auditor, so we said, "We need an account."
I make a motion. I make a motion that we authorize the creation of that account.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any comments?
Just, may I?
Please.
Detail what exactly is this for? And is it?
It's pre-trial services. It's a $5,000.
With just what the pre-trial service?
Or, yeah. There's training, dues, drug tests.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion, second. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, gentlemen. Mike Callahan, La Porte County Municipal Service Center, Assistant Director. Just wanted to, really quick, we know that the raises aren't going to get worked on this month. I understand. We know you guys are working on it. We appreciate that you're working on it. I just wanted to come and thank the council for that, and also just to say that my people are frustrated, and I wanted to just get that out there. Also, Director Stallworth shared with, the council, I shared with the council last month, that we are now receiving $1,907 per day per kid on the shelter care side of the building. And as of today, we have returned to the council $118,238.34. And if this trend continues, it would be somewhere around $1.3 million that the center would return to the council, to the general fund throughout the year. That's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've also informed Mr. Callahan that it would be good to get this in a regular report, and that this way we would see it coming in. We would be able to see what it was for either the month, the quarter, and the cumulative amounts. So we may want to just think about the frequency.
Yes, sir.
Because it doesn't have to be every single month, but to know the amounts would be great. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, sir, for agreeing to come out next week and take a tour, and thank Mr. Karanka for coming out last week.
It'll be my third tour.
To have a tour. So everyone is invited. Just let me know when, and we'll be, we're ready to have you and walk you around. And ask Mr. Karanka, we went everywhere.
Yes, we did.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Hearing no other department heads, we'd like to move forward to the liaison reports. Starting off with the liaison reports with Mr. Cunningham, would you like to share anything?
Pass.
Mr. Yagelski?
Pass.
Mr. Novak?
Sorry about that. Attended FMEC, spoke with Animal Control. We have an RDC on Wednesday. Attended the agenda meeting toward the complex with the Commissioner Graham Marosa, and spoke with Purdue Extension. I would like to, and this isn't a liaison, but it's kind of hard to add it, to piggyback off of what Mike said, create a committee of the council to look into the salary study, and so that we can actually digest that a little bit quicker so we have everything, because it can't be too soon. So that's it.
Okay. Mr. Karanka?
As being a new member of the council and not having officially liaisons yet, I've just been taking my time across the county, working through different departments, as Mr. Callahan has mentioned, as well as going through the Highway Department, Mr. Stevens, and the Recorder's Office, and working my way around the annex and reviewing damage that's been, and repairs going on right now.
Thank you for your report. Mr. Mullenauer?
A couple of things. Like December, I toured the complex as well in surveying the water damage firsthand. And on January 18th, I attended the Solid Waste District Board meeting. January, I should have said January 1st, I attended the Commissioner's reorganization meeting, and then January 18th, I attended the Solid Waste District Board meeting last week. And I as well spoke with Mr. Rosenbaum regarding the, doing something with the salary study to get things finished and finalized on that swell overdue. And there's one other thing, and I've discussed this with Mr. Rosenbaum, and even a little bit tonight, and that's something about the new liaison appointments. And I just, I'm not one to hold back and keep secrets, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm really disappointed in one of the appointments here. And it's nothing against Mr. Kyle. He's the one that's been given that appointment for the sheriff's office. And the reason I'm disappointed is, is, you know, I was, received a couple of phone calls and talked about working together and working hand in hand as a team. And I'm in total agreement with that. And that's what we want. We want to do what's right for the county, for the taxpayers. But I don't know, I was, the reason I say I'm disappointed, because I did request that Sheriff's Department liaison due to the fact I got EMS and EMA, and I've got 47 years of law enforcement experience. So again, nothing personal against Mr. Kyle, but I just think it was wrong, and maybe, I hope not so much from working together, but I just want that to be out there. Thank you.
Okay. My liaison report is. Mr. Keel, I'm sorry. Would you like to report on that?
I don't have any liaison reports, of course, but I can say that I attended a NERC meeting last Thursday, and I'm actually in Washington DC right now for representing NERC for the National Association of Regional Council's Conference of Regions. And like Councilman Karanka, I've been working my way through different departments, talking with department heads as I'm having a chance, and I'm looking forward to speaking with more of them soon.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate that. Now for my report. The biggest part of my time has been trying to take the list and roll it forward from last year to this year. last year to this year of the liaison positions. I have had conversations with every single person. To Mr. Mullenhour's credit, he has expressed this to me privately and personally, directly and I understand, I understand his concern. I'm not going to go into any further discussion on that, that's between him and I at this point. So we do, we are going to put this forward for voting later and that's all I have for now at this point. Thank you. Any correspondence?
We, we have no reportable correspondence.
Okay, thank you. We move on to ordinances and resolutions. The very first one is the ordinance number 2023-01, the salary ordinance, and that was included in our package, everybody?
Motion to read by title only.
Before we do that, if it's the council's pleasure to suspend the rule and just go with both readings tonight, since we're already late with the salary ordinance, that would be my recommendation, but it's the council's, whatever the council's pleasure.
So we should suspend that first?
That would be the first order of business.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and have both readings tonight.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule on having, and only have one reading?
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 That passed, motion carried. Now, is there any further motion that you'd like to make?
Motion to read by title only.
We have a motion to read by title only?
Second.
And the second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, this, this is an ordinance 2023-1, an ordinance adopting county of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies.
Okay, we've read it. Do we have any further motion to accept?
Motion to accept. Second.
We have a motion to accept it in second. Any converse, any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Just make sure those corrections were, I think Vaughn mentioned it, just want to make sure.
Yes.
The other thing I'd like to do, how about if I reserve my comment after we vote? Because it's a request after that, has to do with salaries, but.
Okay.
Right?
We can do it later.
I'll reserve that.
Thank you. So we're done with discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Before, you want to go in between first and second reading with your comments?
I'll go in between first and second, if that's okay.
Okay, so that was for the first reading?
That was for the first, we got to do it twice. I'd like to request the, our council attorney to request from the commissioner's attorney the statute that allows the commissioners to change the classifications of employees and this goes all the way back, this isn't directed at the current commissioners, this goes all the way back from when they did it. I'd just like to see it, after looking through the salary ordinance, it, it's pretty clear that the council has the authority to do this, I just want to know what the statute is that allows the commissioners to pick and choose which ones they're going, you know, when they move somebody in or move somebody out, so.
Just to clarify, when you say move somebody in, somebody out, exempt versus non-exempt?
Correct, change their classification. Right.
I will send them a letter.
Does anybody have an objection to that?
No objection, that's my point. So, I was actually president at the time, I was, I was challenged by the president of the, I'm sorry, by the attorney for the commissioners. I agree with, I agree with Mr. Novak, by the way, that was changed again, so it's flip-flopped in, in the last 15 years at least three different times.
Right.
And again, I don't, if it goes one way, it goes the other way, it's fine, but according to, according to our records, that's our decision out there, so I agree, I'm just backing up, I agree.
I just want to know what the statute is that authorized that.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Hearing that, I would appreciate it if you would do that, you'd be, you were directed to do that. Okay, now we need for the second reading. Anybody like to make a motion to read it for the second time?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
We need to read it again.
Motion by title.
Motion by title first, thank you.
Just like we're having two separate.
All right, all right, motion by title only.
Second.
We have a motion by title only in a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion, motion carried, isn't that?
I'll take one question, or discussion. This motion, does this motion have, does either one of the motions, one or two, have to go, is there any public on that or no? No, okay, thanks.
This is an ordinance adopting county of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies.
Okay, what would the council like to do?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carried, thank you very much. We move to new business. Consider approval of the council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for, do one at a time, LaPorte County Parks Department, a maintenance technician, the person did not work out and they wanted to hire another, a replacement.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, a second? We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. We also have authorization to hire a replacement position on the Michigan Township Assessor, the person retired at the end of the year and looking for a deputy assessor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second and discussion, we have a question?
So, I remember correctly, before this happened, that they were going to put a lot of this stuff into Mike's office, is this part of the decrease? Because if you remember, the previous Michigan Township Assessor had extra people, now that they, that number has dwindled down, is there a set number they're going to have that, that Mike's going to take over or?
They're not, they're not exceeding the number that they had at the end of the year. That's all I can tell you. He's not here, Brett Mannick is not here.
He is, he is.
Is Brett Mannick?
Standing up.
Just kidding. Oh, he's not in the room. Okay, so if Mr. Schultz, who is the county tax assessor, if he would be so kind as to help answer that question?
I believe Mr. Schultz took on a couple of the employees.
That was my question.
Back in, yeah.
Good evening, Mike Schultz, county assessor. We only took them on for training, they were still under Scott's supervision per se, he did the payroll, this doesn't increase the number of employees, it'd be one assessor and four employees they have, this is, would be a residential person, but I only took those under my wing for super, or to, to get them trained properly, because that was the issue we're having with current employees or that they weren't being trained. So they were trained properly, in fact, the one just received her level two, so the two I took under my wings, both have their level twos now, the chief deputy just got her level one and so I don't know where the new one's coming from, but it's no more employees and I didn't have any direct control under them, I didn't do payroll, it was their payroll, so I just trained them.
Can I answer your question, sir?
Okay, that's, any other?
Do you have laptops?
I'll wait for that, make sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? Okay, motion carried. Number two is LaPorte County Public Defender requesting to add an account to transfer funds to pay health insurance. What would the council like to do?
I'd like to, if nobody wants to make a motion, I'd like to at least ask a question on this, I was the one that made the motion, the, when the public defender came there, I was under a different impression, that they wanted the money for the raises, not for the insurance. I have no problem with this, but I'd like to have us look into it first, because this is something new that was not brought up at our council, at our meeting, so I'd like to at least put this on tables at this time.
You're referring to the budget meetings?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're clear, thank you very much.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion?
Discussion. We have a motion to table and we have a second, all those in favor, please say, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no further discussion.
Nay.
Nay? Okay. LaPorte County Sheriff, approval of the sheriff's office pension restatement, believe this is an annual thing and we'd like to welcome our new sheriff.
Good evening, council members, ooh, that's a little loud this evening.
Got to stay back a little.
Stay back a little bit.
More powerful.
I know, right? This is more of a housekeeping item, this isn't a yearly thing, it's been 10 years since we've done it last under Sheriff Mullenhour, the pensioners are just asking that this is a good time to do it, especially now with the new sheriff, myself coming in, and they're just asking that it be restated as, in the email I sent, any matters involving the sheriff's office pension needs to be agreed on by the sheriff's office merit board, the sheriff himself and the county council, so that's why we're here with you and tonight for this. I had provided you guys this document and email, the only changes that we see in this with our plan is the dates that they've changed to update.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion other than me?
Just real quick, I have an emergency call, real quick, I did, so is this, is this for the pension payment right now?
No.
We're not doing the pension payment?
Payment, no, I'm going to come to you guys at a later time for the pension.
We don't have the funds for it yet and we'll discuss that.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
I got a question for the attorney, I don't think I have to abstain on this, being that there's no.
Does he need to abstain?
No, you're not appropriating anything.
Don't.
No, you're good.
Good, let's go.
And my other, one comment I'd like to mention, it's quite often that the IRS requires a lot of changes to retirement plans and sometimes it's very important that it is updated, because you don't want them coming in and finding you for not having the latest paperwork. So we think that's also a good idea, so, all right, with any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The approval for, of the sheriff's office commissary resolution.
Yes, again, this is, excuse me, this is another housekeeping item, this is something that's required with any new sheriff, the one that I present to you guys tonight, it's the same one that was Sheriff Mullenhour had and Sheriff Boyd, state law allows us to have this resolution, it just makes things more efficient and streamlines the process and that, that way we're not coming back to the council every month, asking for permission to spend on certain items, just an efficiency process state law allows us for.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and if, and if I may, because I'm on the agenda at the bottom for a, an additional appropriation, if I'm up here, can you tackle it real quick?
Certainly not a problem to do that. The council, it's under, it's under the appropriations, transfers and requests.
Mr. President, before we move on to the next order of business with the sheriff, sheriff, I haven't seen the resolution, was this sent or is it in our packets?
I had forwarded the information on to you, it's been a couple of weeks.
Me, I didn't, so I didn't forward it to y'all, I apologize.
I forwarded it to every single one of the council members last week.
It's not in the packet, do y'all have it in front of you? Because if it's a resolution, you can.
We've seen it, we've seen it.
Okay, but we're still going to need to, you're going to resolve it today, right? So you're going to have to do some, you're going to have to have some action on it.
And you've, you've reviewed it correctly?
Yes, yeah. I apologize, sheriff, I know you did send it to me.
So, the approval of the, of the resolution, we just did that.
Okay, is there a title to the resolution, so we can have something in the record?
I just have commissary resolution, so, hold on.
Is that resolution going to get a number?
We never, we don't have, we can't pass it around the sign right now, but I guess we can pass, get a copy and assign a number.
Get a copy with you?
I do.
Yeah, that'd be great, so I apologize, sheriff.
Noting that there's a copy in the room, hard copy.
Can you assign it a number?
Yeah, we'll. Resolution 2015-4. So, per my expenditure.
No, that's the old resolution.
The 2023-1.
Yeah, one.
For resolution?
Sorry, I don't. Well, your 23-1 was just a salary ordinance.
That was an ordinance, not a resolution.
Thank you.
Sorry. Just try and jump in there and do our job.
So let's do this, let's go forward with this resolution, I'll prepare it in form, I'll have a cover letter to this, we'll attach it to this and then next month we'll read it.
Okay.
Does that, does that work?
Works great for me.
Okay.
Yes, please.
But that, do, in anything we need to do with the community corrections at that time, if we need to incorporate anything?
Well, I need to.
Get that all done at the same time, we need to talk with the sheriff.
We need to talk to the sheriff about that, because it'd be taking on more of a duty, okay?
That way we get both of them covered at one time.
Okay. So for this month, the sheriff, the sheriff can, you do not have to come back for approval for, for funds and we'll get this all on board next month.
Thank you.
So, what, have we just voted on the resolution, will that stand or?
We're going to do it again.
Oh, we're going to do it again?
We're going to do it again, we're going to get it a number, put it in resolution.
So then do we cancel out that vote?
No, he's got, he's got approval right now.
Right.
Okay.
It'll just be.
I just want to make sure.
Yep.
We're being very clear. So at this point, can we move forward?
Yes, and I apologize.
Okay, no, we're, good, under appropriations, transfers and requests, LaPorte County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP or General or Lit, this is the old Lit or CCD, is this the old Lit number, 1112? So this is the.
General Economic Lit.
General Economic Lit, okay, thank you. For replacement vehicle, the insurance paid half and this is the other half, am I correct?
That is correct, back in the fall of last year, we had one of our civil process officers servers that was T-boned in Michigan City, he was not at fault, the at-fault driver's insurance paid us $12,387.03 and they totaled the vehicle. Just information, it was a 2017 Ford Fusion with 125,000 miles on it and we paid $14,400 for it, so we think that's a good deal from the insurance company that gave us money. We have found a replacement vehicle for $25,000 from EV Ford that they currently have on their lot, so we're requesting the difference of $12,612.97 so we can get the replacement vehicle.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Real quick.
Yes?
Is that under the state QBA?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham, did you have a question or?
What fund are we approving it from?
That's correct, thank you.
Lit or CCD?
You made the motion, just please.
Yeah. Was this applied to Lit?
Well, in the past, I know that we used to take the cars out of CCD, if that helps you.
I know they do, but it has become an additional thing, because we use CCD for also the highway department. Well, right, so under the general lit, it's for, it's for any legal purpose, so there is catch-all for it. Because this, this, because we're not using PS Lit.
Right, thank you.
So I like to put this under general lit only for the reason that, that CCD is, we use that for also the highway department too, so it comes up, so then you, and for their, their additional cars, so.
I'm good with Lit, all right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we've had some discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hearing that passed, moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, if I may approach and get your signature, please.
Just pushing it out.
We've got another item. Yeah, you know, you're not done.
There you go.
You got to transfer $5,369.
You're going to have to wait now. Moving forward, please. Moving forward, please.
Forensic scanner lease fund.
Uh, no, it's right on the next item is 3C requesting to transfer $5,369.08 from the evidence acquisition account to the forensic scanner lease fund.
Okay, I guess I wasn't aware of that this was on the agenda tonight, but this is a forensic scanner that was acquired. I believe it was prosecutor S. Bar. Yeah. And we maintain the yearly maintenance fees on that. We share it with the other police agencies, Michigan City, LaPorte, Westville, Trail Creek, Long Beach and Kingsford Heights Police Department. And I think that's probably due, so that's why we're requesting to make the transfer out of the evidence acquisition into this account so we can get the maintenance fee paid on that.
Let's move.
For the people that didn't understand that, we agree to take that over once we closed off the account for that.
Correct.
We have a motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Karanka. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Am I on the agenda for anything else I don't know about?
Not if we can help it.
You're on the book.
Thank you.
LaPorte County Community Corrections. The first item, A, requesting permission to transfer $786.82 from the field officer account to gas, fuel and oil. This is.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I just wanna make note during discussion that this is from 2022, that we have to go back and close out negative accounts. And this is to close out one of the negative accounts. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Requesting permission to transfer, again for the prior year, $42.95 from field officer to the telephone account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Does she want to know if she can take care of her stuff? That's what.
Correct.
Okay, well, we started this and we'll know better the next time.
Sorry.
So LaPorte County Community Corrections under appropriations, transfers and requests. Requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat, ARP, General, Lit, Economic Development Lit or CCD. And the first one is to correct the negative balance of $214,446.68.
Motion to approve. This is the exact same thing that we did at the end of last year, but it's a transfer instead of, no.
No, it's an appropriation.
Versus a transfer.
Right, so we had that emergency that last, last month and Mr. Sabos contacted the SBOA and they said we need to do an appropriation in order to do it correctly. So it's the same thing that you all did. You're not spending the money twice.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, so a motion and second.
Was there an account? I'm sorry.
There, there, we have not asked where, which account it's coming from. So please advise.
Yeah, last month it was Lit that y'all were going from.
Right. Lit.
So does the person who's second agree to Lit too?
Yes.
Okay.
Question.
We have a. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so we get it all straightened out. I know we have the money we appropriated mid-June, July. Have we already, have we already applied for our new grant? Has it been applied for for some week?
It's 24.
Yes.
How it opens up in February.
February to be, to be assigned by the June date, end of June, so that we get, so around the sixth month. So we'll start receiving money in, in, in July, right?
No, we have all of our money for 2030.
No, we didn't, we didn't apply for, we didn't apply properly for grants. We did not, we were behind money in grants. Right? A lot of this money we're coming from is because we didn't get, we didn't apply for the grant in time, I thought.
Their, their grant cycle.
Yes.
2023's grant was put in back in June.
Correct.
So you're missing. We didn't know about, we didn't know about these issues then.
Correct.
After the grant cycle, so 23 is done. In February, they're gonna open up the grant cycle for 24.
Agreed.
That's where we're hoping to get everything fixed.
For July, 24. Because your midterm, that year doesn't start in January.
Right, and you're hoping, I'm not understanding.
I just wanna keep, keep us informed because we.
I understand what you're saying, yeah, okay.
So because of all this, we're, the county's putting out of money out of general fund here. So we, the money should be available by July of 2024, 2023, for, for, for the money for, that's owed for 2024. So, because you're, because you start your mid, your mid-year.
Does your fiscal year go July to July?
No, we just applied for the grant in June.
Grant deadline. They're, they're still on it.
Well, that's not what was told us. We had meetings of this and I know that for effect, not you were here, but that the, that the grant pays July to July. Not any other other fund, but the grant's supposed to be July to July.
Grant deadline is.
February.
No.
It opens in February.
Right.
When is it closed?
March.
So Mr. Yagowski, it's my understanding and looking at these monies, that these monies accumulated over years because monies were spent that it were exceeding the amount of the grant. And so that's what the arrearsage was. So I don't know if they get money for the 2024, that that money's gonna be captured. They just have to make sure that they spend the money within the amount that's allotted by the DOC under the grant. So I guess, does that sort of make sense?
Yeah, it does. So I guess the message would be, where are you guys getting your help to make sure we are not gonna get messed up like we did with, in the past? That's what I wanna know.
In the past, the project income, our participant fees are set up so that they'll take over for when we run out of grant funds. And what had happened in the years past is we had situations where our fees weren't being collected or weren't being assessed appropriately. And now our fees are being assessed appropriately and we do have excess money in our project income.
Could you find out my question, if you had a chance, then about if, when is payable, when is it due payable?
Yes.
Because it'd be unusual for it to in February, March, and it doesn't go to the end of the year, they don't give you the grants till.
February is when it opens up and then it goes for approval in March. And then it goes for a second approval in October and then they start paying out in January.
Okay.
We just need to make sure that we get everything in there that we need.
Correct.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a first, a second. We've had discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion carries, I just wanna be sure, I heard it. And that was to come out of the Lit 112.
Let's know.
The second item, the second item is to, is for overtime budget of $20,000. I think it'd be very helpful if you just explained the circumstances.
Right now, we're, if we don't have an overtime budget, we're gonna be in the same situation that we had last year when we have employees who are accumulating a gross amount of comp time because we're supposed to have 10 employees and right now I'm down three males. And so those males are working excessive hours to cover the shifts. And so they'll be building up that comp time again and won't be able to take it.
Truth of the matter is, we're either gonna pay overtime or we're gonna pay for comp time.
Correct.
Right, it's the same.
Truth of the matter is, other departments are doing the same thing. This is not unusual.
But they gotta. The difference is, difference is the previous community corrections director didn't ask for any overtime in the budget hearings. Correct? That's, she, under the current situation, she has no option of paying overtime because she doesn't have any overtime budget.
And also, if I may, and the way I understand it is, if overtime isn't given, then the amount of of comp time is far exceeds what we would have typically expected to have because we're shortage. So we're just, we're gonna have less people working because we have less employees currently and then there's less people available to continue to work. So we're always gonna be generating comp time if we don't help fix the situation.
And we're a 24/7 facility, so if I give employee A time to take as comp time, that means employee B is gaining comp time to make up for employee A. So it's kind of a revolving door.
I'm gonna come to the other departments out there. I know, this is not new.
So are you gonna give them a choice or are you gonna tell them they're gonna be paid instead of comp time?
I would like to give them a choice. I know that it's another department that gives their employees a choice at the beginning of the year for comp time or overtime. And it seems to work out well for that department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
And out of what account, please?
Probably go out of the Lit again.
Okay, we, and the person who's second, Mr. Cunningham, you agree?
That's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Close.
Any nays? Okay, motion carries, moving on, thank you very much. We go back to new business. Under LaPorte County Surveyor, requesting to spend money from the surveyor coroner perpetuation fund account to non-reverting fund account that has been in place since 1965. Any unused funds will remain in the account. The total request is not to exceed $39,895.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second.
I'll second it with a correction. You're gonna?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Yagowski has the correction. He has it handy.
So, yes, so under LaPorte County Surveyor, it says that surveyor service contracts, copier costs and maintenance. I know we spent a whole lot of time taking that out. I don't know how it's back in here again because all the departments have been taken, also goes through the commissioners. And all the contracts go through one central because it's cheaper to do one contract than it was to do all the 50 we had. So I don't know what happened to this one. So I'll, we can stay with the motion, but we'd like to have correction by the surveyor on this particular subject before he pays the contract.
That, that it doesn't apply to those, to the copying machines. Correct.
Just to copy, other stuff I know we can.
It could be an old document too.
Could be, I'm, I'm fine.
Sent it every year.
I'm cool with that.
You good with that, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, we've had discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we move on to number six. LaPorte County Prosecutor requesting permission to transfer $1,666.44 from the claims to the group health insurance account.
Is he here?
He's here, would you like him to?
No, 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 we're, yeah, motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 We just wanted to see if you'd come up if we asked you.
Okay, number seven. Discussion on the liaison assignments for 2023. There's two things here. We've been notified that it would be appropriate also to, for the FMEC that I would be reappointed this year. Well, that we need to reappoint the second person and do it annually. We had left it before that I was gonna be the liaison, so we'll also need to discuss that. First of all, the discussion on the liaisons, we've already had some before. Is there any further discussion on the liaisons? If not, what would the council like to do?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I, in light of the fact that we have about 12, where there are more than one person assigned as liaison, I would make a motion to approve in total with the adjustment that Mike Mullenhour be added with Justin Keel for Sheriff Jail and Garage.
Second.
Any other discussion on this? I have no problem with adding that at this point in time. Okay. With that being said, any, no, any other further discussion? Let me just give me a second to get it to here.
I'll remind you, go ahead.
Here we go. Okay. Anybody like to make a motion to, we made a motion to approve, correct? We have a second. We've had a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mike Rosenbaum to FMEC. It's one year, their one-year term's not two years. It's definitely found out.
We have a motion and a second, any conversation or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Nay? Okay, just wanna make sure.
Mr. President, I believe in the position, I want to take transparency here, that you go ahead and read through this list as it's been approved.
Certainly, we were gonna get this posted as well, but I'll be happy to do so. So hold on and get ready. Animal shelter and advisory committee, Mr. Novak, the assessor, myself, auditor, Mr. Cunningham. The building maintenance slash security, we have Mr. Yagowski and Mr. Karanka. For the Circuit Superior Juvenile Courts, we have Mr. Cunningham. For the clerk in the election board, we have Mr. Karanka. For the commissioners, we have Mr. Novak and myself. For the Community Corrections and Juvenile Service Center, we have Mr. Cunningham and myself. For the coroner, we have Mr. Karanka. For the Information Technology Data Board and GIS auditor, we have Mr. Yagowski. For the Drainage Board, we have Mr. Karanka. For 911 Advisory Board, we have Mr. Novak. For the EDC Alliance or GLTC, we have myself with Mr. Novak. For EMA and Hazmat, we have Mr. Mullenhour. For EMS, we have Mr. Mullenhour. For finance, we're no longer gonna call it finance, we're gonna call it the Agenda Review Committee, which is Mr. Novak, Mr. Keel and myself. FMAC, we have Mr. Novak and as of tonight, we also officially have me on there as well. Under Freud 4D, we have Mr. Cunningham. The Health Department, we have Mr. Mullenhour and myself. Highway and Bridge, we have Mr. Yagowski and myself. Human Resources, we have Mr. Mullenhour and Mr. Keel. The Insurance Committee. This time we would like them to actually contact all three people. We have Mr. Mullenhour, Mr. Keel and myself. Lads, we have Mr. Cunningham. NERC, I was already appointed last one month, was Mr. Keel. Paladin, Mr. Karanka. Park and Recreation, Mr. Cunningham. Personnel Committee, Mr. Mullenhour and myself. Planning and Zoning, Mr. Cunningham. Prosecutor and Welfare, Mr. Cunningham. Public Defender, Mr. Cunningham. Perdue Extension Office and County Agent, we have Mr. Novak and Mr. Karanka. For the Recorder, we have Mr. Keel. For the Redevelopment Commission, we have Mr. Novak, Mr. Keel and myself. The Regional Sewer Board, we have Mr. Karanka. For the Sheriff Jail and Garage, we have both Mr. Keel and Mr. Mullenhour. For Soil and Water, we have Adam Karanka. For Solid Waste, we have Mr. Mullenhour. For Surveyor, we have Mr. Mullenhour. For Treasurer, we have Mr. Keel. For Veterans Office, we have Mr. Yagowski. For Voter Registration, we have Mr. Karanka. And for Ways and Measure, we have Mr. Keel. That being said, we'll try and get this posted on the website. Okay, now we get to move on. We have an item here called Old Business, but we've already done the motion support. It was not advertised to pay for it. So this, there's nothing to do at this time until next month. We'll advertise to pay for it and then we'll get it paid. We also need time, this is just bringing up another point. We did pass a public safety lit. It takes time to accumulate the funds. We just got one check.[1626.61] The check was under seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's just gonna take time, and we have to figure out what we can pay first and pay other things, but we are planning to put that on the agenda for next month to make sure that that gets paid timely. Okay. Um, we're now to the appropriations, transfers, and requests. The first one is listing of the requesting additional appropriation from ARP for the volunteer fire departments in Laporte County.
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. There's no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Laporte County Community Corrections, we've taken care of. Laporte County EMS.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take it out of lit for the equipment added per ambulances. One hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars?
We have a motion to take one hundred and thirty-seven, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars out of the economic lit. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first, a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Um, we have council and attorney comments. So anybody on the council have any comments for this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I do, please. Um, this has been happening quite, for quite some time, and the commissioners have the authority to write the contract, but we, but they work with us on it. So, when the contract for the, for the, for the Port County was given, it was given to, uh, for the, at the, um, it's Comcast, uh, is the current contract that they have right now. It was different years ago. Um, so they're supposed to be offering services, just like NEXCO or anybody else. They, they've closed down centers, they, they make people go to VELP, VELP Raisin, they make, not in our area. Older people have a hard time going and using their services. My mom get mad, I mentioned it to her, but I'll mention it anyway. Um, she had a bad, uh, they said she had a bad box, in her box, back, back, did it three times. They, they paid, made her pay for that, but they only give her credit back. My brother had to get involved. Chris is pretty smart at this stuff, I'll just say that. And he had a hard time going through it. So then they, they found out it was in the line, the line, they charged you for line service, and now they wanna give you more credits going on. But I believe the commissioner should look into the contract with, with cable, cause I don't think they're doing a good job, fair enough job for the residents of Laporte County, especially the elderly people. And I, and I could give you more examples. I don't wanna tear up the whole meeting because of it, but I'd like, I'd like to at least make our president, make a motion that we taught, that we asked the commissioners to, uh, look into it. Because any questions? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Just to make sure it's clear, it's just a motion to request the commissioners to review-
Of the contract.
The contract and seek possibly other potential providers.
Or just, or fix the problem.
Or, got it.
I have one question, um-
Sure.
Uh, I've been looking for the email, and I evidently deleted it accidentally. I can't locate it anyway, and maybe some of you here remember. And I think it was sent out by a previous president, Randy. Now regarding, um, there was some money that was supposed to be available, and we had till end of January to apply for.
Yeah, um, may I respond to that? That application was completed, and we're waiting to hear from the federal government, but it's, it's been completed. And, um,
Thank you.
Should get the money.
Thanks. Okay.
So are you referring to the opioid?
I, I couldn't remember what it was.
Reimbursement?
Did you say a hundred thousand dollars, or what'd you say?
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, what about the opioid?
No, that was another-
Settlement. Did we ever get that check?
I just-
You should've gotten it last month.
It just came out last month.
But it should've-
Yes.
Tammy, yeah. Yes. Can you, can you send us that information when you get a chance?
And, and also, I need that question. Do we need from another, something to put that into the opioid?
Cause it has, it has a lot of restrictions, wasn't there?
Yeah, very much so.
Well, I don't think this was opioid. Does anybody remember?
Yeah, but, oh, sorry, last month.
Does anybody remember, um, that email though that came through, and it was, um, the assessor had to, or the auditor had till, uh, the end of January to apply?
You mean the additional ARP funding? Correct.
That was, it was-
And that was- We create, we, we complete, we completed that application-
Okay.
Today, actually, and received confirmation from the government that they've received, um, our application.
How much was it for?
Fifty thousand now, uh, fifty thousand later.
Yeah, that's what it was. Okay.
Do we have to, do we have to, that next meeting, do we have to have a count to put that opioid, opioid?
We, yeah, it's already been, uh, established. It's already been deposited in there.
Normally you guys come to us, so I said, okay.
I just establish a count, when we just voted on establishing a count.
For opioids? No, but you do it all the time, that's, that's why I was asking.
I can't have two people talk to me at once, what? We'll put it on next month's agenda.
How much was that for?
We'd have to look at a considerable amount, I think. Is it like nine hundred thousand or something?
Nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I do, Mr. Rosenbaum.
Okay.
So, Mr. Yagowski, last month, I know that you discussed that you wanna have an exec session regarding insurance and those issues. Have you all discussed that? Is that something we wanna?
We still, we still, yeah, we still need to talk about it, because there's still problems that are out there yet. So, we need to talk about it. We need to have a meeting about it. The insurance company, you had, had, I had Mr. Jones come in to explain a little bit, that you're gonna have to understand the whole detail of what we want, what we should have in the county. So, like, next meeting, if you could give us a half an hour, that would be great. Ask the commissioners to join us, that would be great.
And it's specifically about some employees.
So that's what I said, so it's, so like, was, it was, like, that was what I requested last time. So it still would be that, and there would be, it would have to be an exec sesh.
Okay. Just so it's clear on the record.
Yes, sir.
Did you have something, Mr. Cunningham?
Yep.
No comment? None, or yes?
Uh, yes, I had two items. Number one, um, Mrs. Dermody was on the original agenda for new business, and, um, she wisely, in my opinion, uh, asked to have that table until February, but it was removed, same thing. Um, because she had never made her presentation in front of our new council members, Mr. Karanka and Mr. Keel. And she wanted to do that in front of them. Uh, Mr. Keel was out of town at this time, so it worked out very well. And then secondly, um, I would like to respond to Mrs. Piersakowski's comment and go on the record as I have never said to anyone that I don't care about annexation. So you have one council member that's on the record. I definitely care about annexation. Like you, I live right down the road from you in Johnson Road, and, and, uh, I think you gotta protect all property owners' positions. It might be a scale, and you just have to weigh it out. That's the way we make decisions.
That's it, thank you. Pay Mr. Novak.
I have a few things, and I'll be real quick. Um, next month, and I'll get it sent out. Uh, but last year, I had asked, uh, our attorney to prepare a resolution on some more diversified workforce, and if you could share that with the rest of the council, I'd like to get that on next month's agenda. Um, I do wanna touch on the volunteer fire departments. Uh, we do hope to have this issue that's before us resolved before next month, and hopefully we'll get all that taken care of. Uh, the intention is still, I believe, to move forward with it, but there's a little snafu that we have to take care of. And, um, as far as annexation, this is my stance on it. I was asked about the water and the annexation. I'm all for fixing the water. The annexation is the people that live in that area are the ones that should be the one making the decision, because it's all voluntary annexation, and I'm not gonna speak for those people. So, I'm not saying it's, it's, I don't care about it. It's their decision. If they want it, they can have it. If they don't want it, they don't have to have it. So, that's their decision, so.
Anyone else?
So if you were talking about me, I'm just-
President may make a comment?
Mr. Auditor, you would like to make a comment, please?
I, I would like to briefly note, we sent out an important email to you today, so I just wanna emphasize that with one of the final agendas. Um, and that, that's a spreadsheet that's titled, uh, Pay Raises for Two Thousand and Twenty-Three to Be Paid From Lit Public Safety. I'm grateful to my chief deputy for putting this document together. It's a useful planning document for, for you, uh, gentlemen on the council. Uh, to summarize the document, it says that, uh, of the seven point eight million in, uh, public safety lit expected to be collected this year, three point one million roughly, which is about forty percent, a little bit under forty percent of that money has been allocated for the pay, pay increases for public safety personnel. It also lists the additional commitments for this year from that fund. It shows that leftover for this year after promised pay and payouts on other claims or anticipated claims is rough, just over three million dollars. But take a look at that email, make sure you don't, you know, oftentimes I just ignore spreadsheets that are sent to me. Um, and, uh, but it's, it's, it's very useful for your, for your planning and, and your use.
And you sent that to everybody?
You were excluded.
As long as, as long as I was, I, you tell me that, I understand, so.
Okay.
We're carbon copied, uh, council.
Um, I just wanna respond to something, uh, that was, uh, about the salaries. Um, we have, uh, a total of three people between human resources and, um, the, uh, personnel committee. That's Mr. Mullenauer, Mr. Keel, and myself. Um, I'd like us to, uh, make the first attempt at discussing, uh, a plan and bringing that back to the council, and then, uh, get this committee, then get a committee formed and get going. So, uh, that's, uh, that, that is my initial plan on trying to get it going, and possibly they would be the formal committee, but right now I don't wanna formalize the committee. I just wanna have a discussion amongst the three of us and figure out what would be a good plan, and if we see that there's, uh, a, a good chance to add other people or to do something different, we'll get that there.
Could we, could we also look into proceeding with the HR director?
Um, thank you very much. We, we did talk about it. I, I think that what we'd like to do is, we would like to make a request of the commissioners, uh, to have a meeting, or executive session on this too. It, it should not take long in it to get an agreement to start the, um, the search going again. Um, currently, we're operating still understaffed, and it's, uh, very difficult to run that office. And, uh, so it would be good to conduct the search again.